We have a call, a city council work session of April 19th, 2023 at 6:00 PM to order. You go call please.
Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor is absent. Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Anne Schaefer.
Here.
Kristen Carpenter.
Here.
And Ken Jones. Is absent.
Okay, we have forums, so work session topics tonight. City of Cordoba facility condition assessments. I'll turn it over to Helen.
Okay, everyone, thank you. This is going to be the first of what will become, I'm sure, more than one, several, more than several, meetings to discuss our condition of our existing facilities, equipment and other tangible assets that really help us do our work. It's been a while, I think, since assessment done. I'm not sure we found any evidence of a real full-scale assessment. But what we are aiming to do is to, instead of being reactive where we're reacting to there's a hole in the roof, we've got a leaky roof or something's caving in or whatever, that we, we understand what the issues are with our facilities in particular, and can identify, for budgetary purposes, what our plans are for moving forward to either repair or replace or both over time. I think one of the other kind of critical things is how do we value our assets? At what point can we say it's terminal and we full plug? Of course, all of that is predicated on us having access to resources, which is always scarce. So I think we have to be mindful of that. And in many ways, we're going to be band-aiding a lot of our solutions until such time as we're able to accumulate what we need to make things happen. But first step is assessment, assessment, assessment. And I want to thank Duncan for taking the lead on starting this effort, looking at Parks and Recs facilities. And we expanded that to other facilities and still obviously have work to go. But we'll start tonight's meeting with Parks and Rec and the work that Duncan has done with Kaufman engineers, who we did hire under contract with the ARCA funds that we have available to us to give us a, not totally in-depth, a pretty accurate assessment of where we're at, what we need to be mindful of, what we need to be careful of, cautious of, what we need to anticipate, and some really, really tentative numbers of what it might cost to do repairs, maintenance, replace, whatever. Not every building is treated equally in terms of the amount of time that Kaufman spent. Some didn't need the same level of assessment and didn't need us to dig as deep, them to dig as deep as others. So we'll start here. And again, I look forward to some pretty robust conversation. At least all of us will, will be out of the dark a little bit on some of, some of our facilities. Again, we'll have more work sessions because there's a lot more to, to look at and understand. So with that, I will turn it over to Duncan.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, so just an update where we're at. So basically, this, this is a real first draft non-invasive inspection of our buildings. And I'm going to concentrate on the Parks and Rec department since we get the majority of buildings. As Helen said, there were another other ones which were included. Basically, we just want to look at the functionality of them. Start to talk about how we can make some cost effective decisions to do, to do upgrades. Basically, the overview's of this, the state of their building systems. You know, roofs, interiors, exteriors, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, those types of building nuts and bolts. Kaufman helped provide some costly estimates, and we'll talk about those, but they are just estimates. And some, some interesting numbers have come out of that. And it's obviously going to help us with our long-range planning and also develop a more comprehensive CIP list. Objectives, give an evaluation of each facility, understand what's actually in each facility. What's the, what equipment do we have? How we prioritize repairs, rehab or replacement. What's going to happen over short term and long term? We can start forecasting out. And obviously helps us build a system to manage our units and manage our budget. So it's a real baseline. So now that we've got some data, we can, we can start planning. There's roughly a five to 10-year look, give or take. Some buildings obviously can have longer life spans than that. As I said, it's a visual, non-destructive inspection. So I know for a number of the buildings, there's suggested further investigation into them, especially things like the city shop. Yeah, as I talked about, detailed assessment of architectural, architectural, mechanical and electrical assets. Just the, the types of things that I consider. So we came up with a real interesting new framework where we went to invited each building system and the building in general is excellent, good, fair and poor, based on a number of factors. And giving examples, it's probably pretty hard to read out there, but it's a new packet. Just what we mean by excellent, what we mean by good, fair and poor, and how that impacts on different components of the building, how it impacts in terms of my department uses what that means to them, and also how it impacts maintenance staff. So as you can see, in excellent, most staff time is actual regular maintenance. Whereas poor, they're not actually doing any regular maintenance, they're too busy doing reactive things. I'll, I'll let you read that in more detail in the packet. So here's a list of, of the different facilities and systems in the city. We include the junior high school, junior senior high school, the city shop. And the chamber of commerce, and the fire substation, which I'm not sure I put on that list, but yeah, that was included on that. You'll find the actual detailed reports on the city website, just on the front page at the bottom. If you want some good bedtime reading, that'll keep you busy. So yeah, I'm just going to provide a really high, over-level overview for what they said about the facilities I'm responsible for. So that, I'll split it into two things. What they called deficiencies, so this is where we do not meet building code or other compliance. The other side of that is improvements, so things we could do, but which are not essential. As you can see, there's destruction of the building, Budaki is 85 years old. It's had one major upgrade in 1991 that we can find every good time. So overall, the bones are good. The exterior is in poor condition. The interior is fair, depending on what part you're looking at. Plumbing's okay. The sill, which is basically the outsides, the excess, the parking, again, doesn't be in any form of quality. Just giving the types of things, I won't read these line by line, but most of the things have to do with, as I said, the code compliance. It does not meet current building code or ADA, American Disabilities Act compliance. So some, some, some big numbers. One thing which was consistent for a number of my buildings is our fuel tanks are too close to the buildings. They technically need to be five feet away. So we need to move several of them. And it might be a case of buying new fuel tanks. We'll cross those bridges as, as we go, go further into that. Again, Budaki, a lot of it, as I said, is to do with ADA or emergency exit issues because the building is 85 years old. So in terms of emergency exits and the store, and stairs, basically they're saying that our stairs are too short. We should have handrails all the way down to ground level. Some of them are going to be reasonably easier fixes than others. What else is going on here? Yeah, as I said, the handrails and guardrails. Need to replace in doors, exit doors, they're, they're dead to life. Again, all our, we should have exterior lights on our emergency exits, since I said. The stairway, the internal stairway in Budaki, actually from going from the basketball court up to the mezzanine floor, is actually non-compliant with the building code, because it's too steep. So we need to look at that. So roughly those deficiencies, give or take $280,000. Improvements, again, they gave us a number of improvements of how we could keep the facility fit for purpose improvement. One of the major things was the building has no form of ventilation. Effectively, if you're on basketball court and you want ventilation, you open the emergency exit door. It's not the greatest, greatest way to do that. Again, all our, our lighting fixtures, although we've tried to keep pace with, with changes, improvements could be made to LEDs, things like that. The electrical system, distribution system is pretty close to original.
You're talking about wiring?
Yeah, the electrical distribution board, you know. So that needs some love. Again, the siding, starting to fail all over the building, it's vinyl siding. No record of when it was actually installed, no plans. The only plans we've got are from 1935 or a couple of drawings from 1991. I don't know if you've been to Budaki lately, but you'll notice that 95% of the exterior windows are rotting. So they all need to be replaced. So that's a big project. Other examples, we can improve our locker rooms, again, we think they were upgraded in the eighties. No record. But if we want to have a modern fit-for-purpose facility, we should be thinking about what do modern users want? Should we be putting a family changing room in? Things like that, so some files is there. Again, the entry is not ADA compliant at all. You can't get a wheelchair in if you had any mobility issue and struggling to get into that building or whatever. Again, the gymnasium walls, they're just wooden. They should be replaced with caulked pads because there is no run off on the corp, you need to treat them to the wall. Yeah, so that's, that's one of those. So again, for improvements, they're suggesting almost $3 million. If we were to replace the building entirely, the estimated cost is somewhere between 17 and 18 million. Yeah, questions, yeah?
Are the deficiencies and potential improvements, are they listed by, like in order of priority?
Yeah, so, so in the reports, Kaufman has suggested five phases. Whether that's equivalent to years is, you know, to be debated, but I would say, yeah, we could say it was over a 10-year period.
But like the most immediate priority, for example, in the deficiencies, the cracks and腐蚀es?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yes. Because if that fails, that's the end of the building. So. Moving on to sample. Again, overall, it's good structure, 50 years old next year. The exterior is fair, unfortunately the roof is poor. The interior relates from fair to poor as well. Again, here's our fuel tank, $40,000 to potentially move it. Because where it's located at the moment, there's no actual, you can't put a five feet from the building without interrupting the stairs which have just been put in. So we'd have to move around the back. And then there's also a question of sure side getting access to it. Again, CMU joint cracked, so all the concrete masonry blocks, they're cracked in several places. We've done a couple of little pieces of work, replacing door locks, things which had rust over the way, deteriorated, and so we've replaced all those. We've talked about the pole liner. We just got an update on that, so we've brought in specialist engineers to look at that project. Their climate price is now 172,000. So we'll go out to market and see what we can get back for that. The roof seems a bit high, but that's what this indicates, that the entire roof needs to be replaced and it's $800,000.
We'll bill three hours for that.
That's the going rate, so yeah. Again, some siding issues, deteriorating siding. Again, our changing rooms, we need to replace ventilation on those. The actual ventilation in the entire building is 50 years old. It hasn't been touched since day one. Whereas we've replaced other pieces of essential equipment, but that is now fading. I don't know if anybody's been in this report lately, but inside the actual auditorium, it's currently 95 degrees. It's not particularly pleasant. So we need to address that, and there's a couple of options for that identified.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, one of the things Duncan mentioned to me about that particular thing is there's a lot of the degradation of the building is due to the humidity, which is due to the fact that there is no ventilation, so.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's a big ticket item, but it, and it won't fix the existing problems, but it will keep them from happening again. So it's, it's sort of a chicken egg thing.
Again, all our lights can be upgraded to more efficient lighting, expensive. Again, the electrical distribution system appears to be original, hasn't kept up with modern requirements. One of the biggest pieces of work was around the parking. It is non-compliant and everybody's taking form for ADA access. Every year, we have people we have to call EMTs for who've fallen over in that car park, tried to access the building because of the slop. It's an extensive exercise. Again, nothing is ADA compliant. There's a number of, of things here we, we can do to bring the building up to ADA compliance. So yeah, so roughly $5.2 million of deficiencies, not necessarily improvements. Things which do not meet current building code. To build a new pool, they're suggesting $16 billion. My experience says it's probably a bit low. And that is like for like, 25 yards, six lanes. So through the door, through the door. Moving on, we got the wolf littering field done. Again, overall, it's good. For those of you who've been around for a number of years, you've noticed that the siding is falling off one side of it. Again, that could have been something we should have addressed when we first knew about it. Now it's potentially going to cost $24,000. We need to replace the kitchen hood, install a kitchen hood in the, in the snake shack concession stand because it's, although it's a residential stove, it's been used for commercial purposes. So therefore needs a kitchen hood installed. Again, some more ADA accessibility, making sure we've got adequate handrails and guardrails. And the electrical distribution panel needs to be replaced. Improvements, we could again do some lighting upgrades there. Again, a license application should come and do what's called an arc flash risk assessment on the electrical panel. Today's people want electric themselves, never been done. Isn't like the cost of deficiencies and improvements there $70,000? If we ever wanted to replace that building, it's $935,000 based on square footage. It's going to stay there. So again, here's a building which has continued to deteriorate for a number of years. It's got to the point where the engineers believe it cannot be remedied, cannot be fixed. So they're suggesting demolition and, and replacement. We've got some options on that. For example, it's initiated some very early discussions with the forest service where they would be interested in taking a lease on that site and therefore taking responsibility for that cabin, demolishing it and rebuilding with their, with their money. But we need to work through what that management could look like. Engineers have said it's maybe got five years, five years left on it. But again, that depends on the level of maintenance that we do and what, how we invest into it. The roof trust is actually inadequate to support snow level, doesn't meet building code for snow level, for snow load. So that's, that's a real concern. It's going to continue to get worse. Fleming's Spat, so that's what, as we're exploring out, what was called Shelter Cove, Fleming's Spat. It seems to be a little bit interchangeable. Their building again is in poor condition. It's outlived its useful life. We need to think about replacement if we want to service every street facilities out there by the fish cleaning station. Basically, $153,000 to replace like for like. If we didn't want to replace it just yet, they're suggesting $25,000 worth of improvements just to make it look nice. So yeah. Hollick's Handwinds, it's actually good, it's the best one we've got. Again, some lighting upgrades, some real basic ADA fiddles, I guess, the stuff we can do in the house. Again, the arc risk assessment, the risk assessment, roughly $11,000. Again, if we can replace that, the building's probably worth $165,000 to build from scratch. Only at Kemper Park, we also looked at that. Again, fuel tank too close to the building. ADA excess. The whole mechanical room out there needs to be replacement. It's, it's end of life, the boiler, the water heaters, the pumps, they're original. Original pumps suggesting seventies or eighties, end of life. Just need to do some real basic vegetation and grading out there. Again, replace the electrical distribution panel, no longer meets code. Upgrade some lighting and replace some exterior doors. Unfortunately, all the doors out there are obviously residential grade doors, not commercial grade, and have deteriorated. So again, to fix that building, it's deficiencies $225,000. To build a replacement, it's missing, we need to make some, some decisions in the future of that. The other at Pond Boardwalk, again, I don't know if anybody's been there for a long time, but it doesn't have any guardrails along the boardwalk. It needs to. It's bike on from 25th. So it's roughly $50,000 to put up some, some guardrails. Then to make it ADA accessible, so the boardwalk itself is ADA compliant, but you can't get to it. So the city sort of paved the walkway from the parking lot to the boardwalk is another $46,000. The current power and lighting in the gazebo is a extension cord, several extension cords, which run from here to the hospital. It's not particularly good for the practice. So an upgrade there. And you probably also know that the boardwalk is not actually levelled. It's, it's a little bit slumped in places. So again, we need to re-level that. So it's an estimate of $29,000. So again, deficiencies $143,000 if we rebuild it from, from scratch, $428,000. So the Parks and Maintenance Shop, it was only installed in 2011, somewhere around there, 2012. Again, fuel tank too close to the building. The building doesn't meet current ventilation. So the theory was to get adequate ventilation into the park shop and put the roller door up. Having the roller door up, up all the times, it's not good work practice. So they've suggested installing a ventilation system to rebuild and code. Slight leak on the roof. We've got a potential issue that there's a toilet being installed, but we don't actually know if it goes anywhere. We're trying to figure out if it's being connected to the actual sewer. I know, I'm not making that up, am I? So yeah, so we're doing some investigation there. Again, upgrading the exterior lighting in the building. Again, the roller doors got some corrosion. We should add some external power plugs so we can work outside. Again, $116,000 worth of work potentially. That if we were to build it again, that'd be $1.4 million. That's it, sorry. Sorry to be the, it sounded like it was all bad news, but it's not. It's an opportunity for really first few to discuss how, how we dress this or do we address it, what are our options? Yeah, we need to start thinking longer term of our, our needs and how we continue to service the community. So it's, it's mine saying it's, it's some information, right, some baseline, so yeah.
And the unfortunate thing is there's more to come to that total. Or maybe the fortunate thing, I mean, I think it's important to know where we're at. I also want, want to mention something that I forgot to when I was starting this, starting this conversation is, city government has a higher level of obligation in its service to people. So when you see these numbers and you think I could get it done for less with my local contractor, cities obligated to not only follow code, but to hire licensed bonded contractors and go through bidding process. And by the expectation that we have to service the broadest public possible, our, the expectation and the standards are higher than perhaps those of us that do our own home projects. So I just wanted to kind of buffer that sticker shock a little bit with the understanding that the expectations on government are much higher. And the risks are much higher too, because the public expectation is, is that everything will, every building they occupy that the city owns will be a state building. And anything that happens on those properties, whether through our fault or not, and certainly if we have building deficiencies, will be our responsibility and the risk and the liability that is associated with that is exponentially higher. So I also want to talk a little bit about ADA because you'll see in every single one of these buildings, ADA is a big thing, Americans with Disabilities Act. It is a law, it's a requirement, any facility, especially government buildings that have public access required to have that. There's no grandfather. What we need to do is start thinking of an ADA plan and demonstrate that we're working towards accessibility for those buildings that were built before Hadywood was in existence. So there's no spot cut unless you show that you're working towards and are making efforts. So that's another piece of this, this. So that's another piece of this capital considerations that we need to think about is overall in all of our facilities, what are we doing to provide access for people who have issues of mobility? And that could be anyone from Susan with her broken kneecap to Kathy with her earlier, you know, issues. Mobility issues hit anyone at any point in time, it's not just people who are in wheelchairs. So, I like to think of it more as universal design. It's a way that all of us can access at any point in your life. So, we'll be starting to work on that as well. And I think that's it. So, obviously, we opened it up to discussion, there's more on the plate for future work sessions. We would address the other facilities as well. But just looking at what Duncan has presented, you see the scope of attention that's needed for our buildings and the financial obligations, just to bring up the deficiencies that could potentially put us at risk and save an increase in liability.
Krista?
So is this, for skaters cabin, if the Forest Service is willing to take over that site, is that your preference?
Need to think through that. Because if we went down that road, they would want a potential lease, let's say twenty-five years. Then the question becomes, what do they build? And if it becomes a cabin, my understanding is that then that becomes bookable on the national database site. It has a different level of service than what it currently is. So we would need to go through an exercise to understand what do people actually want to use that space for? What are they actually using it for now? Although it's a cabin, my understanding is if there are a few people actually really stay there, it's more of a function space. So, if that's what people want, that's what we should build. A more gazebo type, a closed structure.
Partly, I was thinking that, I think there's going to be another funding round with the Secure Rural School stuff probably in the fall, and that three hundred and forty thousand figure sounds high. Maybe it's because of what you're talking about Helen, but you could definitely apply for money from that source for that location. I think that'd be a great fit for that.
Yeah, so I guess why the Forest Service, they have money in their back pocket to build new cabins or structures or whatever words we want to use. And as it is next to a trail in terms of greater lake, that takes some boxes for them. And my gut feels that would take a burden away from the city. But, yeah, we need to think through that.
I guess like as the Parks and Rec director, and we've gone through all these Parks and Rec assets that we have, what to you jumps out as like the highest priority items across your facilities?
I guess, you know, the two major ones is obviously the pool. We've talked a lot about the pool liner, because if that comes, that's into the pool. So, the big question is, we can do a lot of these upgrades, but at what cost versus the return? The building will still be fifty years old. It might last another twenty years, but that's pushing it for a swimming pool. We need to have some hard conversations about what is fit for purpose, what is the level of service that this town requires or wants, and how we deliver that. We've done a really good job keeping that pool garden, it's in really good shape considering its age. But nothing will last forever, unfortunately. Yeah, and I guess that's the same with Bedaki, eighty-five years old, has had a good life. Or either we see ourselves in another twenty years. Those are the types of questions we need to certainly work through. We've obviously done a comprehensive plan, which asks some of those questions, but we need to really understand what people want and what we can provide.
Or how to prioritize it, and kind of what's the replacement order.
Yeah.
I just look at, you know, looking at a percentage of the total cost replacement. Some of these repairs are a quarter of the cost of a new replacement. Obviously, it's estimated, but to me, that's generally a good idea to start looking at replacement.
Yeah.
Generally speaking.
Many of them were beyond a quarter.
Absolutely, yeah. But just looking at the pool, the pool is to replace it or to repair it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Pardon?
And just to let you know that we have one capital request in June, which is for the pool liner, because that's a critical asset. And until we figure out whether we're going to replace the building and how we're going to pay for it and all that, we do need to keep it functional so that we have a pool for students to learn in and people directly in. So, with any luck, fingers crossed, there won't be a capital budget coming out of June. And, yeah.
I have some time.
Good question.
This might be asking the unpleasant question, it may be unthinkable, but for the Odia Pond Boardwalk in gazebo, how much use does it get?
We don't know. We've gotten like data on who uses any of their parks. Sometimes unfortunately, we're the last people to know.
I mean, I know it was, Ed Dean wanted it built because he thought it would be great for the residents and the long-term care to be able to go out there, but if it's not even ADA accessible, and I don't know, I just thought...
I've seen a concrete plan from nineteen eighty-eight, and it was going to support it, which included, it'd go all the way around the pond, some other development area on the park. But that was obviously realized.
I mean, there might be other ways to get access to the waterfront besides rebuilding that boardwalk.
Now, these ADA requirements, sure, I hope that we've explored and additional fundings for those.
Yeah, there are some options out there, whether they come to the level that we need to do, is the question. But yes, there's federal funding to assist with that.
Melina, you have any questions or comments online there?
I don't have anything additional to add.
I guess I would just add that these numbers make it more important maybe to add to the list of options. Do we need to add that service? And does the community need to have that? I'd just like to say about the Odia Pond Boardwalk, you know, if it isn't added in there to do something about the vegetation there, it's going to be five more years, it's going to be all elders anyway, quite frankly, if you look and observe that pond at all. So, anyway, it's just one other option that we need to consider on our list is whether or not we need that service, or do we need to own the building, like you say, with the Forest Service cabin, you know. And, yeah, you look at these numbers and it seems ridiculous, some of the prices are of things, eight hundred thousand for a roof for the pool. Seems pretty excessive, but then this is, these are engineers that are quoting this and not a contractor just looking at it and billing. Anyway, the prices are daunting, whether or not you're replacing or repairing or doing upgrades. Certainly, we have to do what's legal, but in the same consideration of whether it's legal or not, you know, if it's a hundred thousand dollars to make something legal, then in my mind, it becomes a...
Do we need the service?
Do we need, do we need to do that? Do we need to own that building? Do we need to provide that service? Maybe it's better off in private hands and let the private individuals fix it if they think it's worth doing. You know, we look at the costs and we look at the revenues. We either need to have the users paying for this or not. You know, certainly, we can ask the public if they want to do this service or not. But then, I think a couple of council members have talked about it in the past, that we need to add to that same question at what price, you know, is it worth another ten mils for you to do this? Or is it worth another two percent sales tax? Anyway, just one more consideration there, but certainly we have to, if we're going to offer the service and we're going to own the facility, then we certainly need to make it legal and cover our assets there, so.
Well, and it sounds like this is part of making a capital investment plan over time. I mean, you could come up with a thirty-year plan. I mean, obviously, some of these are big-ticket items and it's going to take a while. So, yeah, so we get the pool aligned and it buys us some time till we... And I know we have other, you know, we need a public safety building and other things, but it just, at least it gives us the numbers so we know the scale and we can map it out over time.
And just one more, one more preach or my preachy thing. If we're going to spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the bathroom down at the Cove, we need a bathroom at the elementary school for kids outside. I've said that before, but that bathroom down at the Cove gets used by half a dozen people maybe. And the woods in the school will be used by thirty kids every day after school, so, or more.
Yeah.
I think that's good to look at, is what brings in revenue of these assets. You know, obviously, the pool, Bedaki, I would say probably are your greatest sources of revenue for Parks and Rec. Coming in, I'm not saying it's adequate, but I'm saying those are the two facilities that get the use from people who are paying to use those facilities. So that's...
Another point, I think, is probably as part of this discussion, we can look at the comp plan and bring back kind of the priorities that the community's articulated, because that informs a lot. You know, in addition to Forest Services, what additional things does a community want, value, and at what level? At least it brings their voice to the table. At some point, we'll need to have probably a broader community conversation around this, but at this point, we're just bringing this to everyone's awareness and attention. And it's also informing us as staff, because, you know, we've been just responding, reacting, I should say, not responding, we've been reacting to things. And now it's like time to get in here while we're at it. And so, we will present, kind of compile all of this, but present it to a bite-sized pieces so that, and there'll be more buildings to come in. But we'll also look at our vehicles and plans for that and other equipment that we need. I know Sanci or the Sewer Department has some pressing issues and we'll be looking at that at the next work session. So there's some things that we need to address for just really critical core services. And then we also need to be mindful of what city staff needs to productively do their work, effectively do their work, and then talk about replacement plans and developing a plan so that we're not always just like, oh my God, the car is broken, we have to replace it. But we actually have a plan so that we have a budget number that can kind of be just integrated year after year and we don't have to be reacting to important asset breakage, which we will, but, you know, not every day, so. So that's kind of our presentation at this time. Again, thank you to Duncan for all the work he's done. The core report, which is a substantial tone, we are not copying it unless someone absolutely doesn't want to look at it on their computer, but it's substantial, it's not something, it's about a hundred and something, maybe just more than that. Yeah, it's ridiculous. It's not ridiculous, it's comprehensive. And so if you want access to that, we do have hard copy here, we can make available to folks to look at. And it is online on the city website.
Yeah, I just, well, I wanted to thank Duncan and say, don't feel like you're being the bearer of bad news, because we all really knew these things. And you just put it all together in a nice framework for us. And I am trying to look at the big overall picture in that this is giving us this comprehensive plan that we really have never had in the city as long as I've been involved, and I think it's really smart. And it's why the council members years ago put together the permanent fund, because they knew that as the city grew, they would, we would need to have a savings account. And that was what it was for, was to, you know, back in those days, when they set it up, we probably could have built three pools, but that was their thought process. They knew we would have to replace these buildings. So, I think this is good, because it gives us an idea and it also makes sense when we come to doing a budget, tightening things as much as we can so that we can add to the permanent fund and our savings and keep repairing things and building new. Anyway, thank you, and don't take it personally.
We're dispossiting the information. We're not the only city who has these problems, please.
But we could go back to multi-purpose thing and having Bedaki be the jail too.
Yeah, yeah, good thing to what it was. Cool, I thank you, this is it.
What councils change and thought processes change and things go on, you know, at one point in time, the old city, all building was going to go away when this building was built. Still there. At one point in time, Bedaki was going to go away when the elementary school gym was built. Still there, still into the hands. So, I mean, you talk to some people and they don't believe anything we say we're going to do, because we never do it. So, but anyway, it's good to have the information and know what we're up against.
So I would like to recommend that we keep this on planning agenda for knowing work session. We'll have, we can certainly present another, we have a housing work session coming up and I don't know when we will schedule this, we're ready for the next work session for the remaining facilities, but we'll at your convenience and with your desire, we can schedule that second.
I think when you get a big bucket of money, we'll bring it back for discussion.
No, you guys need another full scope.
Another full scope, but there's only so much money. And we either have to increase revenues or something's got to go, we can't do it all. We spent half of our savings this year already unless we get some more grants, so. We've got four million dollars to carve a project, so. Anyway, same, there's only so much money to go around unless we make more money somehow, so. Okay, that it for the work session? Anybody else have anything else?